Border at six oh six P M. May we please stand for the invocation, invited by Commissioner Mike Pearson. Followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for another opportunity to come into your presence, Father. Father, we ask that you just touch our minds and our hearts, Father, that whatever we do here today, let it be pleasing in your sight, Father, that we move your city forward, Father. Father, that we be able to work together in unity with the spirit of togetherness, Father, in the name of Jesus, Father. We just thank you, Father. Father, we ask that you just keep your hedge of protection around this city, around our law enforcement, Father, and everything that goes on in this city, Father, that this city is in your hands. In Jesus' mighty name, amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as well.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Vatt.
Present.
Vice Sam Irvin.
Present.
Commissioner Bolden.
Present.
Commissioner Calvin Williams.
Present.
Commissioner McPherson.
Present.
City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, staff, and thank you to our residents for being here to participate and listening in on our workshop of Tuesday, January, February twenty eighteen, two thousand twenty-eight. We have called the workshop, and this is it. We have two items on our agenda that we'll be discussing. Of course, we won't be voting on anything, but there'll be a discussion of our progress and what we're gonna be doing related to these items. First item will be the evaluation tool for the City Clerk and the City Manager, including job analysis. And at this time, I'll turn this portion over to our City Manager so he can lead us in this discussion.
This, Sir Mayor, Commission, as indicated, today is a workshop to review, based on recommendations and requests from the Commission, the evaluation tools that we currently have and to receive some input and recommendations and positive comments from the Commission on how you would like to maybe make some changes or adjustments, or look at some other samples to be considered for the evaluation of both the City Manager and the City Clerk positions. Gonna start with the City Manager's position, and I apologize, we're having difficulty with getting internet access. Evaluation, we'll start with the City Manager, if you will, and I'm not sure if you all have a copy of that evaluation tool that we currently use. Okay.
Is the internet working? I can log on?
No, no, we're having issues with the internet. I do apologize for that. I'll start off by saying the City of Pahokee has in place already an evaluation tool, a performance evaluation tool specifically for the City Manager, and we are using the City of Pahokee's Employee Performance Evaluation, the general form, for the City Clerk, at least during the time that I've been here. The City Manager's evaluation tool is based on criteria of the, from the Florida City Managers Association and also from the International City Managers Association. And there are several components to the City Manager's evaluation that covers a narrative and also a performance dimension. And in those evaluation tools, there is a litany of categories that you have assigned that will allow you to score the City Manager's progress.
Excuse me, City Manager, is it possible we can get a copy? I mean, I don't have a copy, so...
I don't have any hard copies with me.
I have one extra. I placed them in the box. You want this one?
Yeah, I don't have, yeah, 'cause I don't have one. I know, but I couldn't get up there today after work.
And the instructions, if you wanna follow along, what we have currently for the City Manager, instructions aligned allows for each Commissioner, should complete an evaluation form and sign it in the space that's provided and return it to the Human Resources Department. And there's a deadline associated with the evaluation, the annual evaluation period. It reminds you, the recommendations pertaining to the, pertaining to the performance of changes to goal setting should be conducted with the City Manager in a one-on-one session. So it suggests that those areas, in terms of goal setting, it should be done on a one-on-one basis between each member of the Commission and the Manager. And the instructions, again, it lets you know that it's a two-part evaluation tool. A quantitative score sheet covering categories of performance criteria and a narrative section. So there's, currently, we have two sections, and it's fashioned, again, after the International City Managers Association and Florida League, Florida City County Managers Association Evaluation Tool. There's a scoring sheet section that allows for a scoring of one to five, with five being the highest, excellent is five, four is above average, three, average, two below, and one poor. And then, if you will, we just go, if you'd like to, we can just walk through the tool itself, starting on page two.
I have a question on the first page, Mr. Jackson.
Uh-huh.
Where it says, "Please be reminded, any recommendations pertaining to performance or changes to goal setting should be one-on-one." So are we setting our goals individually, or are we setting them as a body?
That's, that's something that the Commission has decided. I think in the past, you set the goals as a body, so you're, everybody's measuring the same criteria. And that way, it won't be, it'll be a lot easier to, first and foremost, a lot easier to score, and then you'll have some continuity of scoring.
And so if we decide to do that, then we can't come to you one-on-one to change them if we've discussed them as a body, right?
No, whatever you discuss and define as a body, then you'll discuss those individually when you meet. That will be done in advance of you meeting one-on-one. The goals will be established prior to that.
Right, but I'm saying where it says, "Changes to the goal setting should be conducted with the City Manager in a one-on-one," so I'm saying if we've discussed them as a body, we can't come meet with you one-on-one and change what has been voted on for the goals that has been set, is what I'm saying.
I don't, I don't know if I'm understanding your question.
Okay, so if this body say, okay, these are the goals, we have, just say, five goals, these are the five goals that the Commission is going to set for the City Manager.
Okay.
And then, I can't come to you later on and say, well, I don't agree with that goal, so then I wanna change that goal. So what I'm saying is, we won't be able to come if we voted on them as a body and then come to you and meet with you one-on-one and say, I don't think that should be a goal, is what I'm saying. When it says here, "Changes to goal setting should be conducted with the City Manager in a one-on-one discussion." So once we've set them as a body, we won't be able to come to you and say, hey, I want this one changed, and we didn't vote on that one, is what I was asking.
No, because you, if you're developing a set of goals as a Commission, it's, those are the goals that you're gonna provide for me to work from.
Right.
And it would be, it would be kinda difficult for me to be scored on something that I have not been given the information to in advance.
Right, so that's why my question is, will we even need that part in there where it says, "Changes to goal setting should be conducted with the City Manager in a one-on-one?" 'Cause once we set them, we won't be able to go in there one-on-one to change them, anyway.
Let's just change the word from "changes" to "discussion,"
Discussion.
of goal, just one word being "change."
Okay.
So, it says, "Please be reminded, any recommendations pertaining to performance or changes to goal setting should be conducted with the City Manager." So is this about recommendations pertaining to those two things? Is that why it's a one-on-one discussion?
Yes, very well could be the reason for the way that it was written. But anything that's changed would have to come before the Commission in terms of establishing those as the actual goals.
And so I guess my question is, what was the one-on-one discussion? I was just saying, if it has to come to the Commission anyway, why would we have to do the one-on-one discussion?
The one-on-one discussion is not only for developing or changing or recommending goals. The one-on-one is a way of, you get an opportunity to discuss the goals that's been established with the Manager. I don't think the one-on-one is specifically for either Commissioner or each member of the Commission to suggest changes. It's to review the evaluation tool.
I think it was just for clarification, just remove that
I agree.
word "change" out of there, just have discussion.
Okay.
Because the goals is, should be collected with the body.
Correct.
And so if I wanna discuss something with you individually, I just come in there with my, okay, I need to talk with you about this, but not if we're always changing goals. But if I wanna discuss something with you in the, on a one-on-one basis, I can talk, come in and talk to you on a one-on-one, but not about changing the goals, 'cause we discuss those as a collective body.
Right.
Right.
Right. And again, to alleviate the confusion, we'll just change that to discussion, if that's okay with everyone.
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay, we could talk about the performance categories and scoring. There's a, the first is an individual, I'll go over all of the categories first and then, well, if you got any questions or suggestions or comments on the bullets under each, we can discuss that openly. Individual characteristics, that's number one. Professional skills and status is the second category. Relations with elected members of the governmental body, which would be the Commission, of course. Policy execution, reporting, citizen public services, staffing, supervision, fiscal management, and the last would be legislative development and outreach. So those are the ten categories of scoring or evaluation under the current City Manager's evaluation tool. They are somewhat, again, I know I probably am gonna end up being repetitive a little bit tonight, but they're mostly and closely aligned with what's accepted in in the state-level organizations and also the international organizations. They have similar categories that they use for evaluating managers. It may vary, the specifics under each may vary, but for the most part, a lot of the same characteristics are evaluated. Understanding the overall responsibilities of the City Manager is widely used throughout, not only the state again, but throughout the country, as these are key indicators on what makes a good City Manager. If the manager is able to perform in these categories well, it gives the elected body something to really work towards and evaluate effectively on. And if you will, I'll just go over the ones under each category briefly, and then if you wanna make comments or make suggestions on changes, or feel that we need to add or subtract some of them, we're listening to you. Under individual characteristics, diligent and thorough in the discharge of duties and self-starter, exercise good judgment and exudes constant professionalism in the industry. Displays enthusiasm, cooperation, and will to adapt to changing environments. Strives to continue professional development and training, exhibits composure and attitude appropriate for the executive position. Those are all individual characteristics that are looked for or strongly suggested in this particular evaluation tool, but again, throughout the industry. Under professional skills and status, number two, maintains knowledge of current developments affecting the practice of local government. Management by participating in professional development, conferences, seminars, forums, public speaking, and training opportunities. Demonstrates a capacity for innovation, creativity, and is a forward thinker. Anticipates and analyzes problems to develop effective approaches for solving them. Presents a professional demeanor publicly, represents the city in an official capacity, sets a professional example by handling affairs of the public office in a fair and impartial manner. Those are all skills that are expected in a manager on the professional skills and status category. Relations with elected members of the governing body, carries out directives of the body as a whole, as opposed to those of any one member or minority group. Sets meeting agenda that reflects the guidance of the governing body and avoids unnecessary involvement in administrative actions. Disseminates complete and accurate information equally. Assists by facilitating decision-making without usurping authority. Responds well to requests, advice, and constructive criticism. Policy execution, number four. implements governing body actions in accordance with the intent of Commission. Supports the actions of the governing body after a decision has been reached, both inside and outside the organization. Understands, supports, and enforces local government's laws, policies, and ordinances. Reviews ordinance and policy procedures periodically to suggest improvements to their effectiveness. Offers workable alternatives to the governing body for changes in law or policy when an existing policy or ordinance requires revisions or recommendations. Reporting. Provides regular information and reports to the governing body concerning matters of importance to the local government, using the city charter as a guide. Responds in a timely manner to requests from the governing body for special reports. Takes the initiative to provide information, advice, and recommendations to the governing body on matters that are non-routine and not administrative in nature. Reports produced by the manager are accurate, comprehensive, concise, and written to their intended audience. Produces and handles reports in a way to convey the message that affairs of the organization is transparent. Citizen public services. Provides an open-door policy by appointment for community. Demonstrates a dedication to service to the community and promotes citywide community programs. Maintains a nonpartisan approach in dealing with the news media. Accepts recommendations from members of the community and strives to understand their interest in residence. Provides an open-door policy for discussion. Maintains public service with highest satisfaction. Examples: solid waste, garbage, utilities, stormwater, public works, and street and roads. Staffing. Recruits and retains competent personnel for staff positions. Applies an appropriate level of supervision to improve area of substantial performance. Stays accurately informed and appropriately concerned about employee relations. Ensures professional management of the compensation and benefits plan. Promotes training and development opportunities at all levels of the organization. Supervision. Encourages heads of departments to make decisions within their jurisdiction with minimal City Manager involvement, yet maintains general control of operations by providing the right amount of communication to the staff. Instills confidence and promotes initiative and subordinates through supportive rather than restrictive controls for their programs while still monitoring operations at the department level. Develops and maintains a friendly and informal relationship with the staff and workforce in general, yet maintains the professional dignity of the City Manager, of the City Manager's office. Sustains or improves staff performance by evaluating the performance of staff members at least annually, setting goals and objectives for them, periodically assessing their progress, and providing appropriate feedback. Encourages teamwork, innovation, and effective problem-solving among staff members. Fiscal management. Prepares a balanced budget to provide services at a level directed by the Commission. Makes the best possible use of available funds, conscious of the need to operate the local government efficiently and effectively. Prepares a budget and budgetary recommendation in an intelligent and accessible format. Ensures actions and decisions reflect an appropriate level of responsibility for financial planning and accountability. Appropriately monitors and manages fiscal activities of the organization. And the last one under this tool is legislative development and outreach. Shares responsibility for addressing the difficult issues facing the city. Manages, controls, and develops responsive plans or recommendations to mitigate issues. Creates partnership with Palm Beach County for increased support to local community, community development. Examples are secure funds from county creates in a local agreement. Successfully address future priorities and develop adequate plans to address infrastructure and capital improvement plans. Examples are streets, roads, utilities, and stormwater. Increases city ability to leveraging funding from with other regional, state, and federal government agencies. And then the second component of the evaluation is a narrative, a narrative evaluation. And that's covered over the two questions that completes the evaluation narrative piece. And the questions are, "What would you identify as the City Manager's strengths expressed in terms of the principal results achieved during the rating period?" And again, the rating curve is usually for a year. "What suggestions or assistance can you offer the City Manager?" Examples, priorities, expectations, or specific objectives for the upcoming year. And members of the Commission, that pretty much sums up the evaluation tool that we currently have for the City Manager's position. And members of the commission, that that pretty much sums up the evaluation two that we currently have for the city manager's position.
I think the first thing that we need to address is uh the the timeframe, which would be from the effective date that he was actually hired as the uh. City city manager and to the evaluation period for that period uh for a period of one year. That's the first thing I think we need to make sure that's established from the time that you were actually hired as the uh full-time.
Let me let me ask a question and I understand your your question and I completely agree. Let me ask a question, is this for developing a process and evaluation tool in general? Or is it specifically for me as the manager?
It's a process in general.
You don't have to discuss date.
Right.
Well, when it when. It's a general process, so once a time for your evaluation.
I understand now. But I think the um the whole purpose is really the um. As a municipality, I think every staff, every department should have. They maybe already have one in place, but even with our department heads, they should be doing evaluation for all of their staff. I don't know if we wanna tackle that today, but it's just the. In order to, I mean, to run the put the organization as a professional agency, that should be.
Okay, let's.
In that way, you know, we have management tools for not just for you. But for you to evaluate with your staff and for your staff or departments to evaluate with their staff.
Okay, just for clarity. We started out by talking about what we have existence. I didn't go into a whole lot of details, but this this particular tool is for the manager. And the second one that is being used for the clerk is the City of Polk Employee Performance Evalu- Evaluation, the General Tool. This tool is is not only been used, it's being used now, but from my understanding and looking back over files, this tool is used. Uh for department heads. They're also used for all line employees. So the evaluation process, this is nothing new. This is something that the city has been. It's in place and it's been in practice. Just looking through personnel files and working with department heads, they are effectively evaluating their employees. On um depending on the the initial evaluation hire. Uh the probationary period evaluation, thirty, sixty, ninety day evaluation. Um and there's also if there's a need for an evaluation for a write-up, that's happening. And also the annual evaluations are happening. So we just wanna make sure that it's understood and clear that this is nothing new. This is in place, it's been in place for some time now. Uh looking back, maybe I maybe I look back as far as six, seven years. This is one thing that the city has uh effectively done on a consistent basis. So it's already being used.
Uh when you say consistent basis, when was the last time that we actually did evaluation? And I say that just coming to meetings. I know we had issues in the past where the city managers wasn't getting not, no reflection on you. Wasn't getting their evaluation annually and then when it came around time, I don't remember those things. I'm just asking.
Every year, every city manager that that was here got their yearly evaluation. Every city manager got their yearly evaluation, so I don't know whether come and didn't get. Every city manager that was here, six, seven, eight, what, since nine years since I've been here, got an evaluation every year. Every city manager.
I think there's a little confusion because this 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 position has been flipped quite a few times. Some of them probably didn't get evaluated.
But for the permanent city manager did, you might have one that came as a. The interim probably didn't get it, but the permanent city managers that've been here, I think only one that I know of. Evaluation, that was Mr. Thompson. He did get one?
No, he wasn't.
Just for the record, I would like to see the last one that was that was done in the city manager.
But I think today, the reason we are here today is to go over the city manager performance evaluation. I don't think we, I think that's why. We're here today. And I think you can add at a workshop, you can add anything else.
Adding anything, I was making a statement, but then you came back and made a additional statement. Um I I like to see paperwork if 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 possible, and we'll move on from from that.
I'll say um in in looking at the criteria.
You say a lot of things, but you know, I just, I'm just a paperwork person. I like to review stuff, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, in in looking at the criteria.
Just go ahead.
You know, I don't know how long this has kinda been around, but uh. I would also like to see on there uh something pertaining to innovation and technology. Um namely uh integrating technology to improve city operations.
Yeah, I think I seen some on the clerk's.
So it was that already in there?
I didn't see that anywhere.
I think that was on the clerk's evaluation, I think I saw that.
I didn't see that anywhere, Mr. Bo.
Okay, so innovation and technology, I think uh should probably be one of the criteria added. A lot has changed.
Maybe under number two.
Number two.
Would you think that's where it was all?
If if not as a criteria, maybe you can include another goal.
You say number two?
Maybe, you think it should go up under there? I'm asking where you think it should go.
Well, integration and technology is its own.
Oh, you want one of its own, okay, its own part, okay, I see what you're saying. So have a number eleven.
Right.
Okay.
So competen- uh in innovation and technology, competence in integrating technology to improve city operations. Uh second bullet point, ability to foster innovation and adopt best practices. Uh some of this stuff, uh even the poll uh that led to us actually agreeing on this date. That is an example of of the use of technology to for efficiency. I think I thought that that was a really good idea. And uh success in implementing smart city initiatives. That's kind of the direction that we're going in, and I'd like to see um uh that as an added criteria, innovation and technology.
But I had something jotted down that would probably go along with that. I don't know if there's a two, but I guess I guess that could be utilized as part of the um technology. Something that would provide a calendar or deadline for our contracts if that can be put into things. So we can review them ninety days and don't be at the last minute. He came here behind the eight ball. But so we can, you know, just a reminder, so we can maybe have those things on the agenda at least ninety days. Before before the contract, even if we're gonna give them the uh the extension or if we're gonna. Move on and put it out for a bid. And like most of our contracts has, you know, a three-year with a two-year option and those type things.
So would you agree that under fiscal management, cause that's what I had.
Yeah, that's that's where it would go on.
I had ensure all contracts are completed with legal requirements reviewed and discussed a minimum ninety days prior to end date. And then I also had ensure all audits are done annually. To add up on the fiscal management.
Yeah, that's where I had this.
To add those two up on the fiscal management is what's two suggestions I had. Ensure annual audits are completed and ensure all contracts are compliance with legal requirements reviewed and discussed. A minimum ninety days prior to end date.
And another thing I was thinking about that would go on the following fiscal management is um like departments having. I know we set a budget as a um commission and as the city manager and. But make the departments sort of be more responsible for their budget, being able to set a budget at the beginning of the year. And I know all those things can be adjusted, but they can know their parameter of of spending. Which they would have to report that to the to the city manager, of course, it'll fall under the budget that he prepares.
We we do that, we already do that through uh constant updates and reporting for the department heads to the manager. Uh either through, every every time that a request, I'll give you an example, every time a request come in for the department that impacts the budget. We have to go through a process to identify if the funds are in place. And then if it's not in place, then we would have to make adjustments when and when possibly necessary. Or uh if it can be done, or it would be something that we have to promote or suggest in an upcoming budget. Unless it's an emergency. So there's 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 already, the day-to-day operations kinda handle that and it's uh already. Generally spelled out under fiscal management. Uh I think if we, it's just saying we get too 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 specific. It kinda, it kinda makes it makes it difficult to um to manage the department effectively. So I wanna be able to give the department heads some uh flexibility, as mentioned in in the rep- in the. Some of the things that we mentioned here under supervision and not pretty much. Delve too deep into what they're doing uh as department heads. So I under- I understand the 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 intent of what you're saying. But I think again, that kinda kinda erodes the ability of them reporting to me as the manager. And their uh super- their line employees reporting to them as line employees.
Maybe I'm I'm not explaining it correctly, but I'm talking about uh from the beginning of the year, we know there's certain things that gonna have to be. Uh budgeted, say for example, if we got football, we know we got football, we got registration, we got um all the things that go along with football. That those departments should be able to plan for those things and and that should be able like a itemized thing. Now, I know some things gonna come up, well, hey, we might need to request this money to do something that wasn't um outlined. But from year to year, we should be um, they should be able to have uh, cause we know we gonna have to buy footballs. We know we gonna have to buy jerseys. All those things should be itemized in that particular um budget.
So will it be fair to say to ensure each department has a budget? And not going into details, but to make sure that you meet with them annually to ensure that each depo- each department has a budget?
Commissioner, each department as it stands now has a budget.
I understand that, but I'm just saying as part of under fiscal management for um for part of your evaluation. That we wanna make sure that it's done, and so we're saying that yes, we, part of your evaluation will be that you did do this with them annually right now. We don't know whether that's being done or not, I get it, it's on dated, it's day-to-day, and when we see the budget. We see the budget that there's so much money for parks, there's so much money for each department. But um we're just saying that we wanna make sure that a budget, that's what I'm, I I'm trying to see if that's what he's saying. That there is a budget for each department. Like we don't, I mean, I know, I don't know, cause I haven't seen a budget for parks and recreation. I've seen the overall budget. So I mean, that's what it sounds like I I'm hearing, I'm not sure.
I just used that. But even with public works and different things.
Yeah, just just for clarity again, I don't mean to cut you off, Commissioner, but if you look under fiscal management, number nine. The fact that it highlights that um.
Number nine?
Number nine, fiscal management. Prepares prepares a balanced budget to provide services at a level directed by the commission. Makes the best possible use of available funds. Prepares a budget and budgetary recommendations. Ensures actions and decisions reflect an appropriate level of responsibility. Appropriately monitors and manage fiscal activities of the organization. All of those are exactly what you're asking, all of those are already in place. Each department again has a budget, they understand uh six months out for even developing a budget. That they uh they are asked for recommendations on what will be in the upcoming budget. And uh based on projections from previous years. So we take all of those things into consideration before we develop and present a budget to you for your approval. So all those things that you're suggesting, they're they're already in place, they're being, and if you need anything specific. Our software uh may be able to produce a report that give you the the details, if that's what you're looking for, a little bit more specific. Uh so we, the software will allow us to to make various types of reports and types of reporting on the different budget lines. But again, this is this is something that the finance department does in concert with with the city manager's office. And each department heads are responsible for their budget. They create and develop their own budget, they present it to the s- the management. Uh team for consideration. We meet with them, we say, okay, maybe A, B, C is okay, but you won't be able to do D this year based on the amount of funds that we have. Are expected to come in. So again, those are all functions of 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 the city manager's office that's already up and 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 in place.
Especially when I'm looking at the one you were preparing budget and budgetary recommendation in an intelligent and accessible format. Um what I'm thinking is even when it comes down. Say yes, we may not have this amount, whatever, in our budget. But if we are making money off of tickets, um how is that money allocated? How is that gonna affect our personal budget as far as recreation? I know we can put the money different places, but. In order, what I'm looking for, maybe them being able to be self-sufficient. And when we know we making X amount, what's going out and we making X amount for, and then you can prepare that next year budget. Based on what they they brought in, and I know some of the money may have to be divided and go into other places, but. I don't know from explaining it.
Let me try to answer your question the best way I can. Budgets are developed by, it's two sides. It's an asset and a debit side of the budget. So we don't create a budget based off expenditures only. We base, create a budget also based on assets. So what you're requesting and suggesting is already in place. So whatever comes in, and I'm gonna use the example that you just gave for football or concessions. Those dollars that come in, they're aligned with a revenue that will eventually be dispersed. So it's just not like we're not paying attention to both sides of the budget. So hopefully that kinda helps you understand how how it's supposed to work and function.
What I'm saying, if we prepare for the budget this year, okay, yeah, the money, it may come and ask for whatever. We can do X, Y, but we can't do do Z. But next year, we know we wanna plan for that, but we may do fundraisers or donations or whatever might might have came in. That we can plan for that in the next year's um budget, and I maybe I'm not explaining it right, but.
Can I ask a question? So can, will it be fair to say, I have written right here? And we can maybe um that's something we could see where it says provide quarterly financial updates? Maybe we can add that under um fiscal management? There's something I had written here, provide quarterly financial updates to the commission. To make sure that takes place.
That's currently one of our own policy, any way that we ask the city manager to have. Quarterly, have a minimum quarterly financial report submitted to the commission.
So since we do that, we can't add it on here to make sure we can check it off? Since it's something that we do already?
Another line item of what we evaluate him on, but yeah.
So what do we say about um do we all, what about the ensure annual audits are done? Did we, cause I said for that to go up on it also, do we all agree to add annual audits? Also, I mean, I know we know they should be done, but.
Not only do we know they should be done, but it's required by law. So I'm I'm not sure how much you wanna load into an evaluation uh tool. But a lot of the things that you're describing is al- it's already, a couple of things, it's already in place. It's already statutorily established by state statute of law. It's already a part of the ordinance, and it's already a part of uh personnel handbook and policy. Now, I'm not sure how much of that you wanna put in evaluation too, but a lot of those things are already in place.
So let me just ask a question. So if it's in place as a commission, how would the commission know when it's not done? I hear what you're saying.
But how, I guess you you would ask it, did you see a report or if you had a question specifically? But how, I guess you, you would ask it, did you see a report, or if you had a question specifically about something, you ask that question. That's. And most of the things that you're asking for, it'll come before the commission at some point or the other. Uh, in, in case in point, the three-month evaluation was scheduled for last commission, the three-month, uh. The quarterly update was scheduled for last commission and it's gonna be replayed next commission meeting because, uh. Incidentally forgot to, uh, add a component of the budget to it, that's gonna happen, you're gonna have four of those this year. You're gonna have a, you've had. Let me see, in the last year, you've had three budgets, uh, because, three audits because of. Uh, late audits in the past, so that's something you're gonna see every year. Now, for some reason, it comes around month six, month seven, and you don't have a three-month evaluation. What's going on, I mean, a three-month update, you, what's going on with, this should be scheduled. And that's the way of you being able to get that information, you just know that those things are expected. I know we probably developed a, a closer working relationship, come in and you ask specific questions. And we'll, those things will be in place. Now, you can add it to the evaluation if you like. But that's not generally where you find a lot of things that you're talking about.
So then, let me ask a question, cause looking at the two narrative questions, I'm just asking, so if it's not done. Only thing it has here is, uh, what constructive suggestions or assistance you offer to manager to enhance the performance. So then, because it's not here on the evaluation, and because what's on this evaluation. Is what you will be, um, evaluated on, so then, if we wanna put that, because on here, it asks for your strengths. There's nothing on here in regards to, um, deficiencies or anything, so then, if it's not done. And there's nothing on here for deficiencies, then how, how is that going to be evaluated upon? If it's something that, say for instance, I'm just gonna use for example, the audits don't get done, okay, it's not on this evaluation. And it's nowhere on here where we speak about weaknesses, but strengths, uh, what we can.
No, the second, the second narrative, you can talk about the weakness, uh, what's like, you know, what need improvement. On the second part of the narrative, the first part talks about the strengths. But what.
It says.
Area would you identify as most critical for improvement, and you indicate that on that particular narrative comment.
On which one? Where it says what constructive suggestions?
Right, you can put anything you see as deficiency.
But you don't get points for that, you add the points up. And your evaluation is based on your points, not on your comments.
No, it's based on both, you have, that's why I started out by saying, this is a two-prong approach to evaluation. You have a narrative component, and you have a scoring component upfront, and, um.
And so if your scoring is high, and then there were some things that happened in the narrative, I'm just saying, how. How, I'm just trying to figure out how are they going to balance out? I'm gonna talk about that, but I'm not really giving a one, two, three, four, or five for that, so I'm saying you have that there. How is that going to be, um, filtered in? Yes, it's there as the narrative, but the numbers, when they, when they do the numbers, they're gonna count the numbers up.
Okay, the, the quantitative part, um, gets you to the narrative. I, I would venture to believe that if your scope, score high on the quantitative part. Then your narrative will reflect the scores in the quantitative part, vice versa. If you score, score a medium level or substandard on your quantitative section. Then that will be reflected in your narrative, uh, review as well. And the way, you said you're not scoring on it, but the way that you are scored in the quantitative component. Again, it's, it's ranked from five being the highest and one would being the lowest. So as you score that quantitative piece, that's gonna help drive your narrative piece when you get to that narrative component.
And the narrative is largely subjective anyway.
Right.
Exactly. How you feel, I think, which is fine.
Exactly.
Does that help you at all, understand what you're?
Not really, but.
Uh, I'm, I wanna go back to my question, I'm looking at some of the city budget, I went back to two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. They, each department, like, had a proposed budget, and I'm looking here, it shows like, whatever donation came in. It, it's more detailed, what I mean by that, it says, uh, you got the basketball, you got a sponsor fee. You got a, an orange bowl sponsor, they donated nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, um, but they had a proposed budget. If you go back, it's on the city webpage, then I'm looking at a, um, maybe that would explain what I was, um, asking a little bit more. But it's on the actual city webpage, I just pulled it up.
Would you explain, again, what do you, what do you?
When we get our budget, it's kinda hard for us to understand what it, what's, what, what's coming in, what's going out. Um, this one I'm looking at now has a proposed budget, um, any, all of us, y'all can pull up, y'all pull up the city's webpage, you can go on it and see. Uh, two thousand and twelve, thirteen, they have a proposed, they have what money was going in, what was proposed to be. As the budget, and, um. What we're gonna be spending on.
Yeah, we, we do that, every, every year I was explaining, every year before the budget. We go through a process with the department heads, and we ask them to propose the future year budget. Before it's even considered, and that proposed category line that you're looking at is what they're proposing for the department. And then what actual, it, what actually becomes the budget is when it's presented to the commission, and the commission approves a final budget. And that final budget dictates the, uh, the fiscal responsibilities and categories for that twelve-year fiscal period. So after that, the proposed goes away until the next time to develop a budget. So the proposed is, is theoretic, it's not, it's not practical in actual.
Well, I'm looking at the newer ones, I don't see a detail, um.
You won't see it if you're looking at the final budget, it's only doing the.
Well, these other ones are, all of them on the webpage, I mean, but I, when I look at the others, I can easily understand, and maybe the format. Or something is, um, and, and it goes, uh, line by line. What, if they had soccer, it even had lines on there for soccer, um, basketball. But I don't see that when I'm looking at the newer budgets on the city webpage.
Again, so we don't, we don't get off track too far, um.
I, I wanted to add something to number three, if it was possible. Under relation with elected, um, members of the commission. Can we add effectively communicate with commissioners verbally and written? And can we add ensure, ensures proper documents are enclosed to support all agenda items?
We can, the second one kinda. Covers that, set meeting agendas that reflect the guidance of the governing body. And avoids unnecessary involvement in administrative actions.
That's setting the meetings, it doesn't say anything about documents, though.
Well, if you're setting the agenda, the documents are there, if it's a part of the agenda.
Uh, I would like for that to be added.
Yeah, I have another one, under number six, citizens in public service. Uh, could we add, um, a bi-annual town hall, um, for, for our citizens?
Under which one?
Um, service, under number six.
I think we have created, uh, a policy also that we would like to have quarterly town hall meetings. So that's already in place, so, uh, bi-annual.
So essentially.
Quarterly, four times a year.
So that essentially would be him carrying out the law of the commission.
We haven't had.
What, what was, what, what did you say, Mayor Bab? I couldn't hear you.
He said there's already a policy that we're supposed to have quarterly, um.
Quarterly?
But if, but if that's, if it's not, can you not just in your meeting, if you wanna have a town hall, whatever, that's. As we do future item agenda, can we set for a town hall? I don't think she has to be as a, as a, as a performance, a evaluation performance.
But that means policies, why?
But you can, but that, that is something you can, okay, we, we haven't had, uh, had a town hall, we're at future item agenda. We would like to have a town hall, and we vote on and have a town hall. But how, how do you, how do you score, okay, we haven't had a town hall, okay, zero. So how you, how you, how you score having a town hall?
Every three months.
Already, there's something that we put in place asking to have a town hall, but.
But that's under number three, the first one, carrying out the directives of the body as a whole.
Right.
That's what he's essentially doing.
And then.
I think, you know.
Number three?
That's under relations with elected members of the governing body, and that's the first one. Um, I, I think we've already established, that, that's, that's something that we would do, so. That would be taken into consideration when you're evaluating him on that particular item.
So, okay, so you have me there, Mr. Bowden, so anytime something is not done.
Yep, that, that's to be taken in, into consideration.
Okay.
And I, I was looking at number six, putting that on the citizens and public service, and the, the reason I say that, it says, uh, uh. Where, where, where was that, accept recommendations from the community and strive to understand the interests of, as residents. Provides an open door policy, I can understand the open door policy, but sometime when you get, uh, a town hall. People can ask more open questions, and then sometime people have questions that other people wanna ask, and, and. And I, I guess I'm looking at the public service, and, and I'm not just asking for the town hall just for the city manager. They should be, we should be able to answer questions, uh, uh, provide information.
All, all I was just pointing out, we always have a policy that we should have quarterly town hall meetings. That's a policy this commission has established previously, whether it be followed or not for various reasons, that's another point, but it's only as a policy. And it can be rated in.
Number six.
Mr. Bowden said number three. Where it says relations with elected members, um, he helped me understand. I know, but he said where it says, because Bab is saying that we already have some things as a policy, like, um, that, the town halls. So where it says carry out directives of the body as a whole, as opposed to any one member. So if it says a policy that we supposed to have town halls, and he's not having town halls. And that's something we supposed to be doing, because that was, then, that's what we would grade him. And then come, I guess, up under the back part. Where it says what suggestions or assistance, and then you could tell why you gave that low score. Because town halls are supposed to happen quarterly, and they didn't happen. So we got a low score for that, or whatever it is that he didn't carry out.
Attorney on the phone, can she pull up, it was an ordinance or what was it, Mayor Bab?
A resolution?
Ordinance or a, uh, policy, uh, directive we provided. It may be in the personnel policy procedure, but it's, it's in there somewhere. I don't even know if the clerk may even know what category we had it listed, but it's definitely there.
Yeah.
While she's on the phone, city manager, could you can just ask if she know way we indicated that we requested that. What area of our.
Attorney Weeks, can you hear?
What then?
Attorney Weeks, are you there?
Ms. Norris Weeks?
Hello, hello?
Yes.
Yes, hi.
There's a question from the commission, and, um, namely the mayor wanted to know if you can recall. Uh, policy or ordinance where, uh, it suggests that, um, there would be quarterly. Town hall, town hall meetings on a quarterly basis.
Yeah, not to my knowledge, I think you all have had town hall meetings on an ad hoc basis to, um, deal with. I guess, or discuss with the community specific issues, um, but, um. But, you know, the mayor's recollection on that would be much better than, than mine, I don't remember you all having a whole lot of town hall meetings. But, uh, have had some that I recall.
But there's no policy in place for it. So there's no policy?
Uh, city clerk, are you able to, I mean, the, the way we are operating in our system, are you able to Google like an inquiry? Whether you say quarterly town hall, and that particular item may come up under some type of policy? I'm just asking out of curiosity.
Um, it wouldn't come up in our records like that unless you had legislation, if you guys send it as a vote, then that was. Probably long, a while ago, and, and I know that definitely precedes me, that's not something that happens.
I, I'll just say, um, judging, uh, from history. I'm glad that he has an open door policy, because chances are, more people come to see him to talk to him personally than attend the town hall meetings. Uh, oftentimes, we don't really get that many people to attend those. To be honest with you, I think more people probably come to see him in his office anyway. I think we still should have them, you know, but I just don't want us to focus so much on the town hall. Uh, you know, we, we, we spend a lot of money on town hall meetings, and we don't necessarily get the outcomes.
That's why I suggested, or maybe just bi-annually. Every six months, you know, give the, um, community opportunity and, and give them a breath setup, and. And when, I'm thinking town hall, I'm thinking the department heads can come up and tell what's going on in recreation, and, and I don't wanna. Talk about the past and people not participating, because I'm promoting, and I would love. Our community to be present when we have these things, and continue to promote them. Um, and we have to develop those relationships where they would, you know, feel welcome to come up, and, and there's nothing wrong with the open door policy. Either, but I, you know, I think sometimes in, in a open setting like that, other people have questions that. People wanna ask, and they're not gonna go to, to the, to the office, and I, I'm looking for the day that we have a. Full-time hall, once we get out.
I know we can't vote.
Those relationships.
We can't vote here, but we certainly can add that added to a future.
Yeah, we, that's, we'll just, since there's, we, she can find a policy, we'll address that at, at another date.
So I have a question, Mayor Bab, and I know we can't vote.
Cause it will fit with number six.
I have a question, and I know we can't vote, and, um, I know there have been some suggestions. To, um, add some items, and I know before when we had a workshop, we didn't vote. But you did ask, um, you know, is that something the consensus of us would like to have, we didn't take a vote or anything, so. We've been here talking, so are we going to look at some of the items and do the same thing that we said? That we wanted to add as a commission to the different ones?
Yeah, we can do that, I think that's the way we'll move forward, and for is finalizing the, uh, evaluation. Is by consensus right now, saying, if you wanted to add a particular item on there. Then you have to receive a consensus that that's need to be included, and we'll end up finalizing.
So we gotta go back, we gotta go back to the ones where we've talked about already, cause Mr. Bowden started with the technology, and we didn't do that, so.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can, we can start that.
Okay, thanks. Just so we all on the same page, if we all, he started with the technology, Mr. Bowden did, adding a number eleven. I know, I, 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 I agree, cause we are moving to technology.
And that's keep in mind, too, most of these, if not most, I think they all have five items, line items. That we evaluate known, and it's not so specific that we can't capture. Majority of what we're asking for in one of those line items, that's only thing, we just need to be aware of that, we're looking more for now. Specific, which it could add, this, when we have six pages. Could make it out of twelve pages, double what we currently have, when it's already somewhat there, so just keep that in mind.
I just think it's important, too, that we, it's an important position, too, that I think that we shouldn't cut short or cut corners either.
Yeah, but again, if you look at, I'm not saying it's not, that's not true, if you look at previous evaluation. Go online, they, they're there, there are hundreds of them, they all within more than likely a dis- uh.
Format.
Format, almost identical, the questions are really very similar. You have even evaluation city manager, the best management practice, they're there. You know, I think this would even come in more. With, uh, what, uh, Commissioner Bowden was asking for an analysis of how we get to the point where we're evaluating. Let's not be so subjective that we're just putting the points there and not reasoning. Why that point was made that you actually scored it, the way that you scored it. But we're, 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 we're moving to that, that's, that's what we're here for, to be democratic in our process. So we'll start with Commissioner Bowden and we'll move on down to decide. Who wanna add another line item on any of these rating periods, part, or points. And Commissioner Bowden, you started, so I'll just have you indicate an area you see that need to be specifically on here.
Oh, yeah, I just mentioned, um, excuse me, um, there's just the innovation and technology, uh, competence in integrating technology to improve city operations. Uh, the ability to foster innovation and adopt those practices, don't necessarily need that one. Uh, and success in implementing smart city initiatives, uh, which is pretty much the direction that everybody can be going in. So just those really, those two points on their innovation and technologies. And from, like I said, from what I've seen already, uh, with why we are here right now. Um, that type of technology was used to get us on the same page as it goes, so we'd like to continue to see more of that.
So as a consensus vote, and we're not gonna be particularly voting guessers by saying, I, or raise a hand. We need to have at least three, uh, individuals that feel that need to be added or should be added or considered to be added.
I think that's important, I think it's important.
It appear that both of those items, uh, the commission feels should be added to the evaluation as a.
It'll be, it'll be helpful when you're speaking, if you can speak into the mic to make sure that we have your comments captured, cause a lot of times we can't. Write fast enough to get all of the verbiage in.
And if Weeks are gonna be recording this, so it could be included in the clerk, so. If you would, Mr. Bowden, just again, just state those two points item in the category that they should have be placed.
Okay, so, um, category number eleven, innovation and technology. Uh, there are two points on that, uh, competence in integrating technology to improve city operations. And success in implementing smart city initiatives. That's it.
Thank you.
Move to Commissioner Kyle Williams.
So may I ask a question before I speak, Mayor Bab? Are you gonna move down first and say, okay, do anybody wanna add to one? Or is the one person gonna say if they wanted to add something to each one of them and we talk about it, how you gonna do that?
At this point, we're gonna just go with the individual.
Okay.
Whatever category you want a particular item in, you're gonna move it verbally. And the consensus will support that being added if we have at least three.
Okay, I said for number three, effectively communicate with commissioners. And ensure proper documents are enclosed to support agenda items, add it to number three. That's it for that one.
Back in senses, do we have a show of hands or no, that, that would be appropriate to be added? Any objections? You know, see, we try to add those to them with three, you added two to them with three or one, I need to.
Two.
Two, could you do it individually, which one with the first thing you wanted to?
Effectively communicate with commissioners.
Effective communication with commissioners.
And the second was ensure proper documents are enclosed to support agenda items.
I just wanna make sure that we, um. I think the, when you first spoke of it, you, you mentioned, uh, verbally and written, you wanna add that to it or you just wanna?
Yeah, you can add both of that, you can add verbally and written to it, yeah.
So the consensus would be to add those two to number three?
What were the first one?
Effectively communicate with commissioners verbally and written.
Can I ask how, how do you measure that? I'm just interested, how do you measure that?
How do you measure it?
How would you score that?
That if we're coming to a commissioner meeting or there's some things that some commissioners know about, others don't know about it. And that's their first time hearing about it, just making sure that all information is shared with all commissioners, that's how I would measure that.
Okay, the reason I ask you that, that, that's already there, you can put it there, but it becomes redundant, it's already captured.
Which one, I'm, I maybe missed it. Under which one?
Number one, carries out directives of the body as a whole, as opposed to those of any one member or minority group. So that's basically saying that all the information is gonna be shared with all members of the commission and not just one. And it kinda goes back to what the mayor mentioned a minute ago, a lot of the things are captured already and. It's probably just maybe explaining those that are already there, so it can be a little bit more clear. As opposed to, uh, adding things that are already in place.
Well, can I give an example of what I'm talking about? Like, there are some things that have taken place already and I don't wanna go into detail because we're on the air. There are some things that have taken place, I'm a commissioner, that I wasn't aware of, like, I didn't know until you mentioned it in the meeting, where Mayor Bab mentioned it in the meeting. That, um, Ms. Adams had resigned, I didn't know that. I didn't, I'm just saying, so I'm just, my, that's why I'm saying that, that all information, I hear what you're saying. That all, you know, but I'm just, just saying to make sure that it's effectively communicated to everyone, this same information to everyone. So I'm just using that as an example. So, if you're saying, if you're saying that is being done. Carrying out the directives as a body as a whole, that is, I think, items that we agree upon here, uh, on the dais. That's what I think that mean, to me, that's what that means, carry out the directives, because you can't, it, we vote on what it is that we want you to carry out.
That would be more like, um, under three, is that disseminates, uh, complete and accurate information equal, well, not really.
No.
Not really, okay, so probably should, just go ahead and add it.
But, just asking for Claire, I, I don't know. Um, and I hear what Commissioner Kyle Williams saying, but the, the, the conversation, I think that's when it comes to your one on one. With your city manager, what have you, I might not, I don't know everything, you know, you know, you know, you know, whatever conversation. You might have had with the city manager, I might not know that, or I might find out at a different time. But how do you, how do you, if you go into have your, his job is to discriminate for what comes to the commission. But when I go, I might go in and talk to him for a whole different map, he might give me, uh. He might tell me, okay, Commissioner, this is how, this is, so that, oh, well, now let me get on the phone, or let me email the rest of the commission. And what my conversation with my, what me, with him and I had.
That's not what I'm saying though.
So, as far as say, like, if someone, we would never know what everyone knows. After now, it was important information that needs to come out to the commission, I don't, he emailed any commissioner and say, Ms. Adams had resigned. I don't, I don't think he emailed no one. I, actually, even when it said having the party for the, I mean, I'm not mistaken, in the. In the, um, com- commission meeting, he said it was a staff party, so I don't think.
Months ago, yeah.
But, but he, he didn't tell me, he, I don't think he, he told any commissioner that we were gonna have a staff party for to leave it of Mrs. Adams. So, you know, I don't know how that, you know, I'm ju- I'm just trying to understand what information that. Cause I think when it comes to stuff that we need to know as a commission, it should come as a collective body. All of us should need to know that, we need to, and, and that, and that, but as far as, you know, there might be things happen around the city. The truck was moved to Fort Lauderdale yesterday. You know, okay, or let me, let me email all the commission, tell the truck to move to Fort Lauderdale yesterday. You know, that might be just something that I might have asked, uh, to, to him, but it might not be something that has to come. You know, I, I'm just trying to get understanding of what, what you're saying on, on that.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to get our understanding as well, uh, the example you gave is.
So can you explain, what do you think effective communication mean, Mr. Jackson?
Respond to what you said a minute ago.
Or maybe Commissioner Murray can tell me, what do you think effective communication means?
Right here, effective that he will, he will communicate with each commissioner when it comes to stuff for as what deals with the city. He will, he will effectively, whether it be verbal, whether it be through email, whether it be through, well, he will effectively. Just to disseminate that information to the commissioners. But the example you gave, it, for where I didn't know this person had left the city or what have you. That, stuff like that, okay, I don't, well, let me email them, let them know Ms. Adams had left the, left the city, Mayor Bab might have known.
So you don't think that's important that the commission should know there's a position that's open?
Let me feel, Mayor Bab might have known that, well, if you, if you, if, if some of go to our one on ones or talk with the city manager.
Everybody don't have that luxury, Commissioner Murray.
Well, let me, I don't think that should came across the dais, let me let y'all know right now that the city, yeah, we, we were eventually, I'm sure he probably would have told her that.
But I was expecting at least, hey, we have this position available, not so much per se that that person left, but, but the, um.
Come from the city mayor, it came from the mayor.
What came from?
The mayor, the mayor sat there and said they had a party for.
So I'm talking about position that's being, uh, um, available, that's what I was expecting, whoever leave can leave, but I'm just saying. To saying about that a, a position is open and as a, the commission as a whole.
That's his job to do that.
Absolutely, and that, that's, that's germane to what we're talking about, if it's a vacant position. That's posted, just like you didn't inform, and it's on the city's website that a position is posted. But the example that you gave regarding one particular person.
Okay, so maybe I shouldn't, I shouldn't say that, because Mr. Williams, Mr. Osborne left as well, so I guess I would have been giving, as an update. On the available positions that are open.
Okay, if you allow me to finish, it'll might, it might help, help you understand a little bit better on what's germane and what's not. The fact that, uh, an employee left the city is not, uh, incumbent of meaning to tell the commission that a particular person left. The position, yes, but a ti- particular person, what if, what if the person didn't want, uh, it known publicly? On all our broadcast that she's left the city.
But they're working for a public entity, there are no secrets.
I didn't, did I say it was a secret?
No, I'm just saying, you're saying what if they didn't want anybody to know, but you're working for a public entity.
Commissioner Colin Williams, that's a personnel matter, it's not a public entity matter, it's a personnel matter. If the question is asked, obviously, I'm gonna respond to it, but I don't, I don't come to commission meetings and give updates on individual employees on a. On a biweekly basis, that's not incumbent of, of what it, what it is that I'm doing as a manager. So a vacant position, yes, and you have that information, that's posted on the city's website.
So if we don't go on the city's website, is what you're saying, we won't know, you just said it's posted on the city's website. I was talking about, uh, to communicating it effectively to the commissioner, so you're saying it's on the city's website, so that's how you're saying that it's communicated?
No, I'm not saying, that's one example, but you also said written and verbally, written is on the city's website.
Okay.
I think, I think what we've probably gotten off base a little bit. And it's, and I was under the impression that we were developing an evaluation two for the city manager's position. Again, and I kinda mentioned this early on, but it seems as if this meeting or workshop is taking a turn to, uh, to talk about. Individual specific items as it relates to the city, and that's, that's not the reason for the workshop. And what, we still have a, an evaluation two left to go over and it's, and it's approaching, uh, the eight o'clock hour, the seven thirty hour. Uh, so for the better use of our time, and, and I'm not sure how many much, how much more we're gonna go over the evaluation two for the manager. But to prevent from having yet another workshop, if it's not necessary, I would like to continue and complete this workshop based on the reason we are here tonight.
Well, I thought that was a part of the evaluation, effectively communicate, you, I mean, I didn't go, I mean. Questions would start being asked, I think that is an important issue that falls up under relationships with, um, elected members. I'm trying to stay on topic, but you're saying what I'm putting on here is not on topic, is that what you're saying?
No, I didn't say that, I didn't say that.
So let's, let's, let's continue, uh. Yeah, those two item you felt was important to specifically, uh, indicate on the, uh, performance evaluation. Of a city manager, not so much the particular city manager, but just as a city manager as a whole. That you felt that needed to be kinda specified. I think you had a con- concurrent that at least three agree that that should be placed, that we're gonna do that. At least have that added, what other item that you noted that you feel are important?
So is it fair to say, um, ensure audits are completely done, or is that something standard too that can't go on here?
Okay, we're not gonna go back and forth, and I'm just saying this to say this, I would, I was still like, Mr. Jackson. If he see an item that we're requesting to be added, cause he is a city manager, that that may be a little redundant. Because this item, a line item addresses that, he can at least share that with us. For a consideration that that's not, don't need to be on here, I'll put it that way. But yes, that's a, that's a area you feel should be placed on there. To ensure that annual audits are completed. Do anyone disagree that that doesn't need to be on there? If some other item kinda specifically addressed that, then we really don't need to add it. But if, if it don't specifically address it, then it's okay to add it if we decide that that's what we want to add to it.
Without being redundant, Mayor, if I, um, if I may, uh, as I mentioned earlier, this item is, is statu- statutorily required by the state. Um, and it's also a part of the city ordinance, that, uh, annual budget will be prepared and presented. So those, that's, that's already understood, but if it's, if it's the will of the commission, if you wanna add that. Then, then I, I.
Could you also specifically note where in her, uh, our evaluation as far as the point wise? I know we kinda talked about this a little, but where would that be scored or reflected in the scoring? If we can see that, that may help decide whether or not it need to be specifically added or not.
Okay, under fiscal management.
Which are the items, I know you say overall the topic would be fiscal management, that's number nine. Which one, if I was wanting to rate that, say, Vincent, the city manager, the last two annual audit wasn't done on his watch. Where do I put it as a score, I know I could put it in a narrative somewhere, but just scoring. I think that's specifically what she's trying to kinda pinpoint, where can she score that if it's not doing.
Okay.
If it's done, where can I put it as a score?
Ensure, ensures actions and decisions reflect an appropriate level of responsibility, uh, financial planning and accountability. It can go there.
Uh, appropriate monitors, appropriately monitors and manages fiscal activities of all.
It can go, absolutely, it can go at the next one that Commissioner McPherson went right as well.
So it looked like we're saying basically that that could be rated within the fiscal management part of it. Uh, Ms. Williams, where in there you see it can't really accurately reflect the scoring part? When you've tried to, uh, look, do your scoring.
So on that, can we just add something, so when we do an evaluation, because I didn't know that would fall up under there? That we can maybe put IE contracts, um, audits, at least so we would know that, like in parentheses?
Okay, uh, under which line item?
That one what he's talking about, appropriately monitor and manage his physical activities of the organization.
Okay, that could should be easily done, just sort of more of an explanation of some examples of what that line item could include. A few examples of it.
Okay.
Contract deadlines and the, um. I can see, probably can score it under that. Talking to myself now, y'all just ignore me.
Don't ask.
What other item, uh, Ms. Williams, Commissioner Williams, sir?
That's it, I don't see anything else.
Vice Mayor Mervin, you have anything you wanted to say to Commissioner McPherson?
I don't know, I can see why I can appropriately score that under.
So it, the two items that, uh, Commissioner Bowden mentioned, we're gonna add those, and also two items that Commissioner Kyle Williams added, we'll put a parenthesis on number
Nine.
Nine, where it's down to the bottom, where it got appropriate monitoring of managed, managed fiscal activities of the organization.
Okay.
Put a little footnote over here, so you would know how we can include adding the scoring of bodies and contracts and so on. Okay.
And so where would the one go for the town halls? Um, uh, which one would that fall up under that we talked about? Under number six, which one would that one be for the town halls?
Uh, that we was talking about, uh.
So which bullet would that one be?
Number six, yeah.
I know, but which bullet would it go up under, he said it's already there. Up under six, but where? Under which one of the statements?
Maintain public service and highest satisfaction, so it's okay, accept the recommendation from members.
These are recommendations from members of the community and strive to understand their interests, that's like the fourth one down?
Yeah, one going to maintain public services, that's garbage and all of that.
Next to that, I can accept recommendations from members of the community.
Strive to understand their interests as residents.
But we can just put a, a footnote on that, but I would say accepts recommendation from members of the community and strives to understand their interests as residents, provided, uh, but we got open door policy, but I would like to just add.
Town hall and. And parentheses, town hall too.
Town hall. Cause you get more of a, um, community with a town hall than an individual thing with a, with the open door policy.
Wouldn't use the word of self, I would say listen to or entertain false ideas from the public.
Well, that's what I was reading what was on the evaluation.
And again, that'd be a little footnote, so we can have a little guide or clue that the old things are not being done.
And saying strives to understand their interests as residents. And when we talk about providing an open door policy, that gonna be more of an individual thing versus a town hall.
I just have one more, um, question, Mayor Baugh, under the narrative evaluation, um, my question is, will we set goals and will there be a question on here based on that we can talk about the goals that were set? Or we're just gonna stick with these two?
You know, definitely we want to set goals, annual goals for the city manager, this should be part of setting some goals, I have suggested just as a thought that each of us again, it would have to be agreed as a consensus that these are the goals we wanna add, but safe instance, Vice Mayor would select to, and have you and yourself and everyone else here, including the city manager, so totally I see, I visualize having twelve annual goals to be.
And so will those goals be a part of we, of the evaluation, is what I'm asking? Will we have a third question here to evaluate the goals, if they were met, if they were not met, I'm just asking, how would that?
I think that can be a, 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 an addition, if we have two narrative there, the third narrative could be accomplishment of goals.
Okay, that's all.
Got one more, under.
And I don't know if you're trying to get that in a scoring type of narrative, when I say that, still just a written narrative.
Just however they have the other two. Just however they have, I guess, the other two.
Right, I, no, what I was saying, I don't know if she was trying to get to a, trying to score the narrative part also in self.
No, I think, you know, we're talking about an evaluation, we're scoring their skills. So, um, the narrative is subjective, based on what you think and feel.
Right.
Um, and that should be expressed, but not necessarily scored.
See, that's what I'm saying, so, okay. That's why, cause you wanna be scored on facts, not a narrative, right?
Well, that's subjective, that's based on how you think and feel.
So that's what I'm saying, so with the goals, how would we do that then, to say if we set goals and the goals were not met? Would that be a part of our evaluation to count as the scores, or no?
Well, I think while we're evaluating them based on those different things, that's kind of us saying we feel like he met or did not meet things. We're rating him all throughout the evaluation until we get to the narrative piece, so if he did not, uh.
But if goals were not set, then he could, I mean, whoever maybe come back and say, you all didn't set any goals for me, so how can you say?
The criteria is the criteria, he has to meet them, that's the goal, for him to meet the criteria at a number five. That's, that's what we want him to be able to do. If he comes short of that, he's a four or three, I think all throughout the evaluation, we're saying that, okay, he met, may have met it there or exceeded expectations there, and over here, he came short of, uh, exceed, um, the standard, so throughout the evaluation, that's what we're getting, it's just when we get to the narrative, it's what you think and feel, it's subjective.
So if I, we say, okay, we want, uh, new businesses to come into Pohokee, and none come, where would that fall up? Which number this, would this fall up under? And we can't say, oh, well, I'm giving you a bad score because no new businesses came to the city, so where would that fall up on?
That's not, that's not necessarily a skill that's identified in the evaluation. That's not a skill, bringing new business to Pohokee is not one of the items.
And so that's not something that we would look at, any of that?
And that's, that's not mutually exclusive of the city manager, or the not businesses.
Well, when I say, okay.
Got, uh, one I wanna throw out there, the legislative development and outreach. Um, I was trying to see where we can score it as far as our having a representative in our, uh, state, legislator and state representative, um, maybe visit our city, how can we put that in there, cause I don't see anywhere in there when I was reading through them. That she has responsibility for addressing the difficult issues facing the city, manage conflict and develop response plan. Our recommendation to mitigate issues, create partnerships with Palm Beach County for increased support of, to local community development, to cure funds from county creates inter-local agreements, successfully address future priorities and develop adequate plans to address infrastructure and capital improvement plans, IE streets, roads, utilities, and stormwater, and increase cities' ability to leverage funding from with other, excuse me, regional, state and federal government, government agencies. And I, I'm leading toward, um, I know it was stated, I, I don't know, remember who, it was stated, it might have been the attorney, but I'm not, don't quote me on that. Um, we were trying to get our state representative to come and visit at least, um, our area of, visit Pohokee so we can address our concerns, and I'm thinking, uh, maybe so we can meet with them collectively and but we should already, so we won't be violating any sunshine laws, only thing that we'd be able to discuss is stuff that's on our priority. Listen, I know we can even meet with them individually, but if we're all on the same page, and it's already been set in a meeting, I don't think we'd be violating sunshine law. Um, I'm asking, will that be abolished, if the attorney is still on the line? But what I'm looking for is the arrangement of, uh, meeting those state representatives to come and have a, we have a date, but we have already have everything, our priorities and stuff that we wanna discuss with them, and we meet with them as a group. And walk into our city or whatever.
You know, that's something that, that's something that your commission can do, that's gonna have to come from your city manager. When they're not in, uh, committee meetings, or let's say you, you could call your, your representative and, hey, I would like when, when you have availability, that you could come to the city for Hokee, that's their job, and, and, and most, most of the time, they will say, well, let me look at my calendar, get back with you, and they will come. They will either come meet to me, to, I would like for you to come to a commission meeting, okay, when is your next commission meeting? And then they'll say, then you can say that, okay, Mr. City Manager, I talked with, uh, Ms. Gail Harold, and she would like to come on December the fifteenth to commission meeting. Then you would just put, put that.
I wouldn't specifically talk on my mission, so we can walk around our city and.
I'm just saying, you could do that, it don't have to be a meeting, commission meeting, but I'm saying commissioners can, and that's, and actually, that's what we supposed to do. That, we can, we can, we can normally, we could call, you could call your commis-, your representative, set up a date, and I would like you to come ride around and see our roles.
What, what I was looking for, their strength in numbers.
Right, I'm just, I asked you a question, what you saying about not breaking the sunshine? Only you won't break, break the sunshine with that, if they come here to the meeting and meet as a body. That's the only, but you yourself personally, I'm just saying.
I understand that portion of it. I understand that portion of it, but, um, like, say like we have our legislative parties, we've already met on that. So that's not a sunshine issue, the only thing, the same thing that when we go to Tallahassee and Washington, we gonna be presenting those same parties that we've already discussed in a meeting. And all of us on the same, same page, speaking the same language.
Okay, but then you said, how can they come and walk the city?
Yes.
So that's what I'm saying, that's something you could do individually. After, after May, when legislation, uh, is over, when they're done in Tallahassee, you could call Gail Harold and say, I would like you to come see some of our struggles in the city, and she will come.
I understand that portion of it, but I'm looking.
It don't have to be, I'm just saying, he could do it.
Let's, let's, let's get back on the evaluation.
This, 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 move on, move on.
I was trying to figure out what, what, are you requesting anything to add?
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, maybe trying to put some of that responsibility, I know some of it I was, but as far as the outreach portion to our legislators and representatives, and I was just.
I said, I think, um, one of the things that we probably need to think about is, when we're considering these things, um, we have, we do have some concrete examples of, you know, even how the city manager is doing on that, like, for example, when Commissioner Baxter, uh, County Commissioner Baxter had her, uh, she was in Belgrade, of course, our city manager was in attendance. Um, of course, he got a chance to speak with her on some matters and things like that, so I think when it comes down to these items on the evaluation, uh, we have to reflect on concrete examples that we've actually, uh, seen him do in, in basically doing his work on a daily basis. Or showing up to, uh, meetings with the county commissioner, showing up to other meetings and things like that with, uh, with other potential le-, with other legislatures, uh, he does those things. And oftentimes when we attend, we see him doing those things, so.
And, and to the Vice Mayor's point, um, elected to elected is a lot more effective when you're, when you're talking about communicating, uh, I've made.
Just, just, we gonna just strike mine coming.
No, we're not gonna, I'm, I'm not suggesting that, but I think it came across some commission meetings ago that we tried to schedule some time to have the commission, basically what you just said, come in and walk this, walk this this city and see some of the issues. Uh, I made countless requests to have that happen, and every time I make a request, she's not even available, or she's in Tallahassee, or she's doing something different, that's not only for Senator Harold, it's also for Representative Weinberger's office. But I've, I've ventured to believe that if she received three separate telephone calls from the members of the commission, that she would find a way, or find staff to make sure that they're in the community, because they respond a lot better and a lot quicker when they're talking elective to elective. Uh, will I continue to do that? Absolutely, I do it almost on a bi-weekly basis, reaching out. I'm trying to schedule meetings for the legislative, uh, Palm Beach County Legislative, uh, Action Day. And they're not taking appointments now, it's too far out. But those are the things that you might not hear about every day, but believe me, it's something that I'm, that I'm doing, because I understand what my functions and responsibilities are when it comes to that.
Alright, okay. That's gonna conclude the city manager, uh, performance evaluation. We do have a second evaluation, which is an overall evaluation of the general employee. The thing we'd need to consider is whether or not we wanna have a little more specific evaluation pertaining to our civic clerk, since she is a, uh.
She gave me one. Mayor Baugh, what did we decide about the goals?
We, we're gonna, we're gonna need to do that at a next meeting.
No, not set the goals, my question is, did we decide that it's gonna go on here? And be a part of the evaluation, or not?
As, as a narrative form, we would rate that as accomplishment of, uh, specific goals that we have set, annual goals, we're gonna do that in a narrative form, I think, it was the conclusion of that. We'll have three narrative sections that we'll be doing, the third will be goals set.
Okay, thank you.
Going back to the, uh, clerk, I think this evaluation is general one, really cover most of the things that we would ask a clerk to be responsible for doing and carrying out. Unless you're gonna add something to this, then would this be satisfactory to our needs? I think what we really need to do too is actually Google city clerk evaluation, you have some good examples of evaluation that the clerk can be, uh, graded and evaluated on.
I think we need to go through a line by line, cause I got some suggestions that I wanna put out.
So he, here's the thing, and, and this is why I even mentioned, uh, the job analysis in the first place, is because that's gonna give us the actual criteria that we should be evaluating city clerk based on. Uh, if I'm not correct, are we the ones that will be evaluating the city clerk?
Yes.
Okay, so if that's the case, uh, in terms of criteria, we should be looking at records management, agenda preparation and distribution, meeting management, legal and regulatory compliance, public communication and customer service, election management, administrative skills, interdepartmental collaboration, and confidentiality integrity. So those are some of the, the, the criteria that we should actually be evaluating on that are specific to the job of city clerk. Um, like I said, which is why I asked, as far as the, the, the thing is, it's hard for you, it's hard to judge things that you don't fully have an understanding of, and understand the criteria that actually drives performance in that particular position. So this is why, um, I asked for that, uh, as opposed to having something that's, uh, that really doesn't target areas that
Right.
uh, serve as criteria for the position.
And was, do, do we have a copy of her job description, did we bring that today?
No. Well, that's the thing, the, the, the job analysis, the, the job description is a byproduct of the job analysis, so.
Well, I have a, I have a, uh, evaluation that have somewhat more, more of an analysis of part of much of job analysis on some of the things that I would like to discuss. Uh, if we just go to number two, say job performance, under this one, it was provided, it says the neatness, thoroughness, accuracy of overall quality of employee work, uh, that was number two, I would like to add. Written and verbal communication with mayor or clear, uh, wait a minute, responsibility, no, wait a minute, I'm sorry, number one, number one, it says carries out legal responsibilities, carries out legal responsibilities and meets legal deadlines in accordance with provision of Florida State statute, federal laws, city policy, and I think this is more curtail toward the, um, city clerk versus just a city, regular city employee, because she's not just a regular city employee, she's appointed federal laws, city policies, and charter code, and codes of the city of Pohokee, issues public notices and prepares correspondence to citizens and other agencies in a timely professional manner, keeps informed of change in laws, in law, that affect legal requirements of the office and adjusts procedure accordingly. If we go to number six.
Where are you reading from?
I have another evaluation that I'm looking at that's more curtail towards a city clerk instead of just a, a city employee.
Yeah, cause a lot of those, um, to me, it's not, um, I'm looking at this, what Mr. Bowden gave us, which is really good as well.
Actually, this is a, a one that I, I. I, I actually, this is a, a, a one that I, I.
Yeah, this one.
From the city of Pohokee, I don't know who it was done on, but it was curtail towards a, uh, like they did the analysis and it was more specific job specific.
You have another copy of that, Mr. McPherson, or no?
Yes, I can, I can send, I can send everybody a copy.
No, you have, I'm saying, do you have a copy with you?
I have one with me, but I don't have an extra one.
Oh, you don't have an extra?
But I can email it. But, uh, then even if we go to number six, job productivity, employee demonstrates a commitment toward achieving, this is what the, uh, one that was provided. Tasks are completely efficient and effective, uh, work product. Complete works accurately and timely, organized work with clarity for effective use by others. Practice effective time management and prioritize projects to ensure compliance with deadlines. Able to adapt to change in technol- that's the one I was talking about, Mr. Bowden was talking about, able to adapt to change in technol- technological environment. Originate and innovate ideas and methods to improve job to complete tasks better. Reliability, reporting to work on time, con- conform to work hours, conscious use of leave time. And if we go to number nine, work environment and safety.
What, what we need to do is maybe, uh, continue this, add another workshop in the city clerk to finalize a product. And we all can agree on, uh, we can have Mr. Jackson as the city manager kind of construct one, you're as good example.
Let me just, I don't mind Mr. Jackson adding something to it, but we are her supervisor.
I'm saying as a draft though, that's what I'm saying, that's the only thing I'm saying, I can go on the internet and give you a.
No, this is not, this is from the city of Pohokee, the one that I'm reading from.
We're gonna take, we're gonna, we can take that, take what Mr. Bowden has, Commissioner Bowden has.
And there's another one.
And combine those to come up with a draft that we can vote on as a commission.
We have three, tell them we got three that we can look at.
I'm not saying Mr. Jackson would be doing, he, he can make sure it's put together for us, for our consideration of items and areas we wanna see evaluated on.
Let me take a picture of that, Miss Bowden.
But we'll take what we have here.
So what you said, we gonna have another workshop?
Yeah, we would have to have another one to do that. We can do that.
Could, could I ask you to forward me a copy of that or provide a copy of that for me, cause I, I haven't seen that version? Uh, Nora, Ms. Clark, has she seen that version?
And also it's, we have three here, cause, um, and maybe he can look at the one, we'll give him these and look at all of them. And it's specific to all three of them, to the clerk.
Okay.
And maybe, you know, see how you could put it together, maybe in the same format that we have for the one as the, um, city manager. Um, looking at all three of these.
I think it's important that we just stick, stick to the criteria, I like the format of the city manager evaluation, so we can, uh, kind of, um, merge that.
Want us to send it to you in Word already versus giving you a copy so you don't have to type it all over?
Do you have an electronic?
I have it, I have mine, the one that I did electronically.
That'll be helpful if you do that.
You, you have yours, you have yours electronically.
Okay, okay, so any that you provide, if you don't have it electronically, I could.
I sent it electronically, um, the internet is not working up here.
Right, I saw part of few from you today.
Yeah, just examples of what you may wanna look at. Yes, sir, consider it done.
I just have a quick question, now, Mr. J, um, are we gonna have the, um, are we gonna do narrative questions for that as well? Or the same, kind of the same way, at least try to have maybe two narrative questions also, pretty much, maybe on the same as these?
Right, yeah, it's basically the same.
The same, okay.
So you wanna just give you this, Mr. Jackson?
You can.
Okay.
Was the analysis addressed, Commissioner Bowden, that you need, and anything brought back for more of the end there? So the city manager.
No, I just, I just think it's important for us to, um, stick to the criteria that point toward the actual job itself. Um, that's what it's really based on, everything starts with that. Uh, even, like I said, the job description is the baby of the analysis, so is, uh, you know, the, everything else. So it starts there, focus on the skills pertaining to the job. Uh, and create your evaluation based on that, as opposed to being, you know, doing a broad evaluation that is really not targeting the skill.
And I have a question, um, Mayor Bab, is it possible? I know all of us are giving ideas and we don't know what everybody's ideas are, so is it possible we can get a copy of what everybody submitted? Because there, I know he's not gonna be able to use all of that, and there may be some things that he put in that he thought may be important and we may not think it's important. And maybe we looking at what we have from everybody else and say, okay, we maybe feel like you left this one out, we could take this one out. And we have a copy of what everyone submitted when we, um, when, so when we do look at it.
Also, Mr. Jackson, forward a copy of this, I'm gonna have him, if it's okay, if you all send you a copy of this, this is more of an analysis tool. How you effectively evaluate a city manager. I think our tool we have is Drake, we have a good tool, and we tweeted it a little more to even make it better than what it was, so. But this is something you can look at and also de- definitely just online if you Google this here, but we're gonna send this to you, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, hello, Mr. Ma- Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I just wanna, um, let you all know that the manager won't really be able to collect things and put it together without your knowledge. What he can do is, um, you know, collect and redistribute, it's, you all will have to still vote on whatever it is that you come up with, um, as a body. So, uh, so that it will be in the, in the sunshine. And, um, and there was one other comment, I didn't wanna interrupt earlier, but there was one other comment about, um, I believe, uh, Commissioner Bowden was reading something about. Um, confidentiality in relation to the city clerk's evaluation. I couldn't hear all of the conversation, but just know that, um, you know, this is government and so there's no confidentiality. Anything other than just public records that have to be exempted and those kind of things, there's no, you know, their records and they, they don't have a specific exemption. That it's not confidential to government, so that's all.
One second. Uh, confidentiality and integrity pointed, points to handling sensitive information with discretion and professionalism. Hearing to ethical standards in all actions and decisions and demonstrating trustworthiness and reliability in all assigned duties. That was under confidentiality integrity.
Confidentiality, so, say, can I apologize, but I just wanted to make sure I put it on the record just in case, um, it had anything to do with documents. Thank you.
I don't think she understood, never mind.
Do we wanna continue as far as the discussion, comments concerning the commission? They got it on the agenda, so that's all I'm trying to guide it through the agenda. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and do it, you can just say no comments at this time and we can do that, so it's on here. Commissioner Vice Mayor, Mayor, thank you, Commissioner Calv.
No comments, ma'am.
Commissioner Bowden.
No comments.
Commissioner McPherson.
No comments.
And I don't have any comments. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the workshop at this time.
Adjourn the workshop.
Then move to second, off the roll. Can't, can't take a vote, even adjourn. We adjourn.
Oh, we can't even, oh, we can't. Not even adjourn?
Okay.
I have a quick question, so, um.
No time, well, you can ask a question now, we got, no.
You will send out a survey when we're gonna have the workshop for, um, for, for the clerks?
The clerk?
Right, okay.
Maybe, who, and that workshop, the goals set in for the, uh, city manager, those would be tied together.
So we are, so this will come to the commission, but when we have workshops, will that, will that information come to the next commission meeting?
You're gonna vote on both?
Yes, we'll vote, so whenever we have a workshop, it's gonna come to the next commission meeting.
Or maybe not the next one, but it needs to come.
That's what, that's what I'm asking, how long will it be before we come to the next commission meeting?
Attorney weeks.
It normally be the next commission meeting or the previous one after.
Cause then you have to do a future, I think you would have to do the future agenda, I know we adding all this, I don't know.
One second, we should, excuse me.